Before we get started on community development, I want to make an announcement about a veteran service officer today. On the November 12th, beginning at 10:30 for the Veterans Program at the American Legion Post on Highway 27. That's on Monday, starting at 10:30, and lunch will be following the program. They want me to make sure I let everyone know about that and have an invitation. Other than that, we'll move on to the Community Development Committee. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, sir. First thing I'll note tonight is that we're first again, so if we could shuffle this around, it'd kind of be nice.
Okay.
It doesn't really matter. Call the Community Development Committee to order roll call, Sam Lyles.
Here.
Jimmy Budrum.
Here.
Tony Bowles.
Here.
David Jeffers.
Here.
Sean McGrady.
Here.
Benny Carson.
Here.
And I am here. We do have a quorum. Then the agenda tonight, ladies and gentlemen, the only thing that we have is other. And there wasn't anything put on the agenda prior to this meeting. I've got a couple of things away, announcements about the only thing I have before I do that, though. Is there anybody on the committee that would like to bring something up? All right. Seeing none, the only things that I have is over the course of the last three weeks, we haven't been here, we were talking about JTV, their career fair that they had back in October. Since then, they've contacted my day job and had a second round of applications. They took online applications due to October 28th, so they're still looking for folks to fill those positions. They're going to hire up to 50, possibly more now it looks like as they prepare for the holiday season. And if anyone's interested in that, it is jtv.com/careers. So those opportunities are still out there, so we'll cut that out of the hour. Of course, in the employment situation, of course, the unemployment rate went up close to ticks over the last month. However, that was kind of incidental, not really major shifts in the employment situation. We're still looking, all of our owners, factories, and businesses still desperately seeking employment. So again, jobs are out there. You've got your major employers, I've talked to Great Dane last month, I've talked to JD Technologies, I've talked to HADA. Everybody's looking for someone, so the jobs are out there for people in Scott County. One thing that just one brief of cuts us a little bit early is that in April, federal government, the IRS designated several zones across the country, they're actually census tracts, they're called opportunity zones. If you remember, empowerment zones in enterprise communities in the 1990s, if you're like us, those are federally designated areas that had benefits to those making investments in those communities. The IDB of Scott County has worked diligently on trying to designate a section of Scott County an opportunity zone and have been able to do so. They're working with Mayor Tiddles at this point to finalize all the things that need to be done. That area is kind of in the mid part of the county. That will provide incentives for investors in that zone, basically on their capital gains taxes over time. And Mayor, if you've got anything you'd like to say, I don't want to get too deep.
Well, with the qualified opportunities zone, it's a definite plus, and it's mainly for people that have made a lot of money in capital gains and have to worry about a huge capital gains tax. So this is part of the Trump tax reform that is allowing people that have had a lot of property made where they need to delay or avoid those taxes, they can go in and buy property or in this qualified opportunity zone, or buy existing companies or properties that invest in this area and sign that qualified opportunity zone. If they stay there for five years, if they owe $2 million in capital gains tax, well, in five years, that drops to $1 million, and in 10 years, their capital gains tax is totally knocked off the books. So it's the main thing, it's kind of to draw investment into the area and have the people that have the money and these capital gains taxes to worry about, to have them a place to put it and invest in, hopefully, Scott County. So we've got a lot of different things going on at the ID board, as you mentioned, to take advantage of these areas. It's a big deal we're trying to capitalize on.
There's 176 census tracts that the state designated, so we're fortunate. It was designated by, at first, you had a working laborer that went into it locally in the state of Tennessee, got involved, actually nominated that tract. And the federal government will appreciate everybody, every level that had anything to do with that. So again, that's preliminary. We'll continue to talk about this as it goes on. It's more now, you see project than ours. Anybody else have anything else about the state?
The company for having trouble finding employees. Is it a skill level issue or is it a drug issue? Or you have any idea?
In terms of different companies, it's broad, and it's a skill set issue because like the skilled labor force, it is a drug issue, it's not just here, it's everywhere. And it's also a retention issue because what we're seeing now is folks hiring people, training them, them working one, two weeks, and simply walking away from their job. And I think it's kind of the society that we're in, we're in that instant gratification. We want immediate results for everything. Back in the day, employees, they worked, and they were glad to stay with the job, they had a bigger picture in mind, and they wanted to be able to gain wealth, material things. And today, it's just not there. They work for the day, and get paid tomorrow, and it's a vicious cycle. I don't know what the answer to that is, but it's something that has to be addressed. I know the Youth Service Learning Initiative with Stan, they've kind of done some initiatives with youth, trying to generate that work ethic back into that generation, and maybe that's what it's going to take. And maybe it'll start back in the youth and work forward. But it's definitely a problem on many different fronts right now. That's all I have, sir. And I have a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion by both of you, second by Lyles. All of you in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you. The Budget Committee.
The Budget Committee, Patty Brown.
Here.
Kenny Chadwell.
Here.
Sam Lyles.
Here.
Paul Strum.
Here.
And I'm here. So first on your agenda is amendments. I think you should have in your budget, a copy of some amendments. And I will defer those to the agenda. If you want to explain those, or vote.
The first one is on county general one-on-one. A lot of it is due with grants, or as you can see, I put resolutions that have already been approved by this county commission or a previous county commission, and I tried to put resolutions like the Birk Mill Bridge. We had already discussed it. I'm just putting those in. Budget amendment, then like the stock grant of Volca, we did not have those in the grant, having to move those around. And the airport grant, just classifying it, that it's coming in. Then we have 116 Recycling, she's just showing additional revenue coming in. And then in 131, just showing where they're getting the state aid that we had put in the budget and showing classifications on them. 141, the first one is transfer to cover the federal budgets, and then they have done some additional reclassifications. Or 142 is a total reclassification. She's went in and done job cost on it, and so that's, majority of that is just reclassification on it. 151 is what we have made earlier, we proved to pay that debt of the $193,200. I'm just doing a budget amendment to give the additional principal that we need to put in the budget to pay for it. And then, of course, our final one is the capital budget. This has been proved in a previous budget, but we have awarded the budget, and it's coming from the rural development. Matter of fact, they contacted me today and saying they're getting ready to dump that money back into our account. And then, of course, money that's coming from that fund balance was already set aside there in the previous budget.
Did anybody have any questions regarding those? And I'll interpret a motion after we approve those, send them to the report.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Kenny Chadwell, second by Patty Brown, voted on a roll call. Patty Brown.
Aye.
Kenny Chadwell.
Aye.
Sam Lyles.
Aye.
Paul Strum.
Aye.
And all of them. Number two on the agenda is the airport grant, $3,800 match for a $76,000 grant.
Your decision.
All right. Wrong? Or incorrect?
We're just asking for matching money for $76,000, which is taxiway extension engineering. And that is because we are probably on the shortlist of getting some 100% money from the FAA, probably about 2.4 billion, and we need to have this taxiway extension engineering in place before they look at our records and say, okay, you guys have done what you need to do, you've got the engineering in place, we're ready to go ahead and do that. That being said, if we don't get the money, it's still not a total loss because at some point in time, they will need to extend the taxiways at the airport, and this engineering will last from now on. I mean, nothing will ever change as far as the engineering part of it. So, you know, like I said, if we don't get this money, it's not a total loss to get the engineering done on an extension taxiway.
So this is an engineering thing?
Yes, this is an engineering thing, yes.
Is this coming out of the airport's budget?
Or that's the question, is it going to come out of their budget, it's going to come out of fund balance?
We'll probably take it out of our budget.
Okay. All right. So you hear a motion, and we grant approval for the $3,800 to come out of the airport budget to match it.
Before making that motion, did they have that existing in their fund balance?
Well, I'm sure they did. At the end of the year, it might make it tight on in a certain line item. So right now, I know they did.
Just haven't done one before. I know they kind of have tight budgets, so.
Right.
When they came to get this application put in, it was kind of a last minute request from the grant board. They came to our, you guys came to our office at about 9:30 in the morning, and had all be done by 4:30 at half.
Right.
So Brady and our office worked very, very hard to get it all submitted and turned in so we didn't miss any deadlines. There were just a few things in the grant application that were new to both of us that we had to all get clarification on and get done, but we got it done, and we got it submitted, so.
Sounds like a great opportunity. I think to hold it up over the 38th annual county's budget, but let's make it as is.
I think one, I just think one of the main points is, you've got this money that's coming from the FAA, and if we're just put ourselves in a position of being able to use that money because we've got the engineering, I think that to me, that's.
And it creates some chances to get. Exactly. Yeah.
Well, I'll make the motion to make match the grant out of airport funds, but we understand even that if that's not available when needed, that we reconsider taking it out of fund balance like they had. Do we have a motion?
I'll second the motion.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Voted on a roll call, Patty Brown.
Aye.
Kenny Chadwell.
Aye.
Sam Lyles.
Aye.
Paul Strum.
Aye.
And all of them. That's all we had on our agenda. Does anyone else have anything to bring before the budget's completed? Anybody have anything? Unaffirmed motion, the adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, that is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Building and Ground Committee, your decision.
We have called the Building and Ground Committee to order, roll call, Gary Jecker.
Here.
Sean McGrady.
Here.
Patty Brown.
Here.
Kenny Morrow.
Here.
Harold Chambers.
Here.
Benny Carson.
Here.
And I'm here. The only thing that I have on the agenda is the lease extension with the Scott County Historical Society for all the old courtroom at the old courthouse. The Historical Society would like to have a little more security in moving. They've put a lot of money and effort and work into renovating that area, and they are asking for about a 15-year extension on that. The current, it was actually leased in June, going through May for one year at a time. But they would like to have a long-term lease for security, to make sure that they know what they have for a year at a time. So would that change anything in the lease other than extending the years? Right now, it's just, it's automatic year to year. And we put that together in the request of Commissioner Budrum. That kind of work to get some grant money and money. Is it grant?
In the termination clause, it still sounds like it would be staying the same.
Which is?
Which states either party may terminate this lease for any reason whatsoever by giving the other at least 180 days prior to original notice.
About six months. What's this reason for 15 years? Oh, we just want to know, to make sure that we have that for an extended period of time. I am the president of the Historical Society, and it's a lot of work to move. When we do start moving the things into the courthouse, and we put a lot of money into renovating that, we'd like to have the security of knowing that we have that for one year at a time.
My man, I'm actually renewed, right?
I'm actually renewed for one year.
You had it, you actually had it, Dave.
And then one thing, you might feel warm and fuzzy inside, having said something right down there for 15 years, but when you still have the termination clause in there, really doesn't, the term really doesn't mean a whole lot to the group.
Either party has the rights to terminate within 180 days, which is about six months, as long as that's left in there.
The change would really do a whole lot.
Would, is the extended lease, would it enable the Historical Society to be eligible for more grant opportunities?
That would not change anything.
You don't think it would affect it one way or the other?
No, that would affect it. I guess, just adding a few cents where the only thing I can think about in the termination clause was, we figure they cease to be an active entity at some point, that plan which may need to be added if we want to get over the stage of term, that we have to forego the six-month period of time waiting for this lease to be terminated. And hopefully, that never happens, but.
Define how. I mean, I'm sure I'm probably for something contract, the lease.
One thing would be interesting is you have all those historical documents in there. I don't know, is there, and I'll yield to Sheila on that, is there anything to preserve those artifacts in the county, if Historical Society failed?
If the Historical Society failed, the county would have to maintain those records themselves. All these years, the Historical Society has maintained those records for the county, plus historical records, family genealogy books, that kind of thing, for it, at the county. But when you read the articles in the, or county offices must do in order to protect and maintain the records, it even goes into, they do bill in the building, climate control building, hire a full-time employee to maintain and take care of those records. So Historical Society has done a big job for the county, and there are hundreds of books, and they need to be on the floor, on top of shelves, kind of, and we're in the process of having that done, that getting them on the floor, getting them into shelves. So if the county said, you can't be there any longer, I don't know what they do.
I'm just trying to get an idea, the Historical Society, are you meeting regularly?
Yeah, one month.
Month to month?
What's a month, yeah.
Okay. And that's pursuant to bail laws?
No, no, actually, our bail laws are only about three times a year, but we've been meeting more frequently.
We make the second Saturday, maybe.
We've been meeting more frequently to try to get more interest in.
We have someone there every day. If we're on the courthouse, we're on an archives building, so we have membership, volunteer applications filled out, so we're going to have some volunteer training, we're going to have to them get upstairs finished. It'll be open every day, there'll be someone there every day, seven hours, it's going to be great. And it's a big job.
They've built a tremendous job, tell them today. I'm just trying to come up with some length that we could put in if the body was to present this.
But if the Historical Society, they have a wonderful account of those records.
They have, we have so many records, so.
But I'm trying to think 15 years.
Well, if that, that 160, they haven't, they're not going to make any difference. I mean, if we had a 15-year later, and you said, you've got six months to go, it wouldn't be 15 years when nothing appears.
Well, I think any body, this body would have to be the sound mind, a little off the rocker, otherwise, you know, if you're going to go ahead and make a motion to terminate your lease, now we're responsible for these documents, now we've got additional personnel, and probably another storage area in ourselves, and a whole different method for taking care of these things. I think it would not be a wise move for this body later down the road, determining if that lease is about to be resolved.
I think that's a thinking, I think that's a thinking.
The, well, the reason we need to look at the archives building, the courthouse, that there are so many records, books that we have, that it is swag and flopping in certain parts of that building. Those are so heavy. We have a large amount of records going around.
Did you get one? No. We're going to have to get that in, because the next three times, we have to, they have a court, they have, they have lanes covered, all around, they have staining, they have cloud wood, they have shelving. Is just having inmates up and running with them?
I was asking about the document preservation.
No, I think that comes to that very strong thing, it has been approved, but I think that that's, mine is going to be used for work to be done in the, in one of the.
And what's going on with the grant, one of the legal officials at the state level was working on getting us that $22,000 back for other purchases in the Historical Society.
Well, I told Stacy about that the other day, and she said she didn't think we'd get that back because that was under the administration, and we don't use it by certain period of time. So we sell, basically, also, $22,000 that we can, you can use.
We have to use that $3,000 for your restoration.
Well, we have 17 numbers, and the cloud wood that we're ordering costs somewhere in the neighborhood of $2,000, Stacy's and everybody's pay, and we still have more to pay on the ceiling fans, that probably in the neighborhood of $400, $500, plus the wiring that probably, that was more obvious, so.
David, I'm not on your committee, but I just have a question. Is there anything being done to reduce your office rent through reducing this stuff down to a digital format?
That puts $22,000, it was a point of everything trying to go digital, which mainly could just be a convenience for those wanting access to the material, you would still have to maintain and keep the documents themselves. See what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, but I don't see why.
Digital is a good thing, it really is, but we have to be ready to do that, and we're not ready enough.
We have books down there dating back to 1850, sections of Scott County, and we don't want to destroy those, those books, those are historical documents.
Some of them are still there, but they have to be handled with cloth gloves. Can't touch them, you can't do it with your hands. Maybe 17 numbers.
I think that both parties have a tremendous responsibility here, and I think you take it on a tremendous responsibility to take care of county documents. I think that kind of leads more toward what we were discussing earlier, though, about the termination if you cease to exist. I think there needs to be something in there about if the county must assume responsibility, that that's orbitally more quickly than six months, because collectively, you're working together now to preserve the history, but if there's an individual or a group of individuals that are outside the scope of your society, decide that they wanted to take X, Y, Z, they could, unless we had the right in order to go in and lock that down and keep that from happening to the body, they may not consider that. I think we'd be fine with working one year, one year, as long as the county, with what you were saying, is to accept that responsibility of maintaining those, but we put it with the Historical Society, cease to exist.
We don't have a choice, I don't.
Yeah, I think it's already there, I think there's, there is there.
So I think the county, it really needs to deliver the hand of support and courage to the Historical Society to continue doing what they are doing to, so the county financially doesn't become responsible for having to do the things that were, I'm sure the rules change when the county has to be involved with it as far as the methodology used to take care of these documents. It seems like it is wise for us to work to continue to do as much as we can to help the Historical Society to continue their endeavor to preserve these documents, so.
There's so many people who don't show even the Historical Society, and they think it's just a genealogy, and they think it's just a thing.
I've been in your old building, it was amazing the things I could find, just looking around, just a few hours up in there.
Well, we had a lady by the other day, and he was on his way back to Ohio, and he was looking for some information on ancestors, this is Dr. Francis. So we got down there and looked, and it was Morgan County ancestry, we have that too then. So we, we're going to the county, Morgan County ancestry, the website. When we were doing the Bonner Serge memorial, well, we got some information on the website, on the Bonner cemetery, on their names and names of paper killing. That was all wrong, so we go to Historical Society, we look through the older rich words, all newspaper files, and we found the correct dates and the correct names of these fallen boxes, so there's a lot of, there's a well of information that needs to be taken care of.
Cease to exist? Sure, I can. I have to define, cease to exist, which would mean that this dissolving of Historical Society, or their being inactive for a certain period of time. That's why I asked David, how often do you need? And that's a month, once a month, but according to your bail laws, it's quarter, correct?
Would we need to change that?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that if you were to stay inactive for like six months, which would be consistent with termination, it's currently, that the county would have the option, not the obligation, but the option to take it over. I mean, it would not, I think that would protect both parties, in my opinion. If you want, if you're nervous about the one-year automatic extension, I mean, what does the rest of the body think about that? I mean, do we need to change that, or?
Should you say because, that's what you do.
It's similar to the lease on the property over by the law field, right?
Right, it's automatic for the...
How long have they gone?
It's year to year, unless, unless one of the parties actually, uh, takes some action, that it continues to, you know, continues to renew every year.
And after fifteen years, the change doesn't make anybody more stressed.
Whether it's one, or five, or ten, or fifteen, it's still the same.
Just don't, don't expect your dollar, your...
We're trying to save enough money to do that. But if, if you, Commissioner Shad not been down to the top of the courthouse, go down to the book, what we're doing. Uh, the archives, go look what we're trying to say, and...
One thing I could put in lease, just to make, because based upon the conversation, is to, is to actually put in some language that talks about the county's obligation to preserve historical records. The historical society has agreed to take that on, on behalf of the county.
And that's, that's in city town's record, keep it annual.
It is, but it would, it would memorialize kind of what we're talking, so I could do that.
That, that would be satisfactory.
That, that would be satisfactory. And then in the, in the event, the county would recognize that in the event the historical society ceases to exist, the county acknowledges its statutory obligation to preserve this historical record.
That would be good to know, what our obligation actually be, is the county, say, that, that is something we want to do, or that's obligation? What, what is our obligation?
Our obligation would be just to keep the records that are required in state law. I know you've got a lot of urgency.
Yeah.
So that would be the only thing we would be on the deal.
Yeah, what we just say, as obligated under state law, which may change, you know, for a year.
Uh, I give a motion to, uh, let the county determine, review the, uh, that lease and make the direct adjustment student.
And bring it to full court, two weeks.
I'll say, I'll make a motion. All favors say aye.
Aye.
I do have a question, when you said they need second Saturday, each month, where, when can you...
At the old house building, at that call.
That's, that's all I have on my agenda. Anybody else have other things that they want to talk about? Most of the general.
The other commissioner, Jeffers, chairman of emergency services.
Emergency services committee, following orders number first twenty-eighteen, roll call, David Blue Day, Shonda Gray, Donnie Bowlin,
Here.
Kenny Morrow,
Here.
Harold Chambers,
Here.
Benny Carson,
Here.
And myself, your present. First on the agenda is emergency management for a performance grant.
This grant we receive every year from the federal government, and this year it's nineteen thousand dollars. Uh, I do have to get the county to approve it, but there's no matching funds from the county whatsoever, it's all free money.
What usually is the grant money used for, or...
Uh, for my salary, insurance, and whatever else needs to be taken out.
Is it not used to be used for, uh, utilities for the...
Yeah, it does that also.
Any further discussion on this? Need a motion to accept this grant, put it on to full court.
I make a motion.
Motion by Bowlin, second by...
Correct.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, she is there, we need to, is there some weather coming through tonight or something?
Yes, there is, there's supposed to be, since the various storms coming through, they're staying in between two and three o'clock, and there could be some heavy rains and damaging winds, sixty to seventy miles an hour winds. But it's supposed to be fast moving, and I'm sure we'll have some paragons and freaks out.
Next on the agenda, animal service.
Uh, just to let you all know, we got the two trucks that we bought with the city regi grant, those are inspected and they're on the road every day now. Uh, with that being said, we have two units that we need to surplus. It's a GMC thirty-five hundred, a Chevrolet thirty-five hundred, I think both of them are two thousand eights. Uh, the boxes on them are a two thousand two and a two thousand four, they did remounting device. They don't need to be took off, and we're trying to remount those again. So we just want to surplus those. One of them has four hundred and eleven thousand miles, and the other one has three hundred and, right at three hundred and eighty thousand. I would give ginger all the information throughout the process.
You'll probably need one to bring that to the finance committee, have you speak with Mr. Phillips? Next on the agenda, sheriff's department, Homeland Security grant.
I think the title of that one needs to be changed, it's really a visibility enforcement of Tennessee traffic safety laws kind of grant.
Yes, it's, uh, just we call it GHS, so they changed it to high visibility, but it's a grant that we get every year, it pays five thousand dollars. And this year it has to be split, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars for equipment and twenty-five hundred for overtime, for officers working traffic counties.
Do you think the split again?
I'm sorry, yeah, it has to be split, twenty-five hundred...
I understand twenty-five hundred for salaries, the other twenty-five hundred for, for supplies for, uh, DUI enforcement or radar guns or whatever.
Yes, traffic enforcement, I don't think that's, that's what it's used for. The other twenty-five hundred. But it's a grant we get every year, there's no match to it or anything like that.
You have any questions, Sheriff Phillips?
Do we need to do something on that?
You guys are gonna make a motion to send it forward to the full commission?
I make a motion.
I'll say aye.
All right, thank you, roll call for them. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I will say that I will be abstaining from that vote, I think it's a good grant, but I'll be abstaining from the vote to conflict the entry for being employed, the sheriff's department with the possibility to be benefiting from that possible salary there, so I'll be abstaining.
If anyone will go ahead and vote on Commissioner, it'll be fine.
Yeah. I'll be saying this go around. Anything else to be brought for the emergency services committee? Now here's any motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion, Kenny Morrow, second. No change, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Mayor, uh, Paul, big government, we need to order, David Blue Day, Kenny Morrow,
Here.
Andy Brown,
Here.
Jared Jeffers,
Here.
Paul Strunk,
Here.
Mike Slade,
Here.
And I'm here. Uh, the only thing we have on the unionized discussion, library board appointments and reaffirmment, uh, committee should have received, a document, letter from Ms. Williamson stating the changes, um, in the board. The new board consists of, uh, Dr. Edson Williamson as the chairman, Janice Wood for vice chairman, Paul Vayner Secretary, Isaac Blackley for Chancys, Alicia Miller, and Christian Sexton. So, uh, we will please entertain a motion to send that to the full commission.
I'll make a motion.
A motion by Mr. Jeffers and second by Mr. Morrow. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We vote, most in passing. Have nothing else on the agenda?
I've got, I've got any questions.
Somebody had something.
Uh, I know last month we had brought up changes in policy for vacation policy, and when we had that discussion, I know we wanted to table it, you know, further discussions, of course, I just want to get a kind of seeing where we're at now, a month later, because the thing about it is, one thing that I did kind of warn about in the previous meeting, that, you know, employees in the future may wind up, you know, kind of taking a hit, you know, if the policy wasn't changed, and is one of those that Mayor Tibbs, you know, advised me that you've had that actually happen, uh, with an employee that switched from the recycling center to the road department. You had the individual that was paid out, that had earned three weeks vacation for over eight years employment. And when he wound up switching, he was paid out the three weeks that he was due, or the amount he had due. Now he is at the road department starting over as a year one employee on vacation, it will take him eight years to earn another three weeks of leave. And so I'm just kind of wondering where we're kind of, where we're at, kind of, what later.
Mine, uh, it would, something that's still needs to look into, the big problem we've got, especially with the personal policy, every personnel, I mean, every department, the sheriff's department, the road department, uh, my department, everybody can take their own policy. So we're trying to find something that will work for all the departments, department heads, so we don't have all these individual policies. It's not been any...
Absolutely.
It's something that's not gonna happen overnight, I think, uh, the county has already found that out four years ago, or three years ago, they started working on this. And what they have is a good, good example on what we need to be going towards, but I have some major changes in their, their version of it. But I think they're, they were on the right track, and we should probably continue to look at that and get everyone on board, between the department heads, road department, sheriff's department, and all involved, so this is something that's gonna take some time. It's not, it's not on the back burner, it's one of the twenty-eight files on my desk right now.
Yeah, okay.
Good shift.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else for the committee? With our ten motions, Commissioner?
Motion, second.
We got a motion from somebody, by Mr. Flayton and Mr. Strunk, all in favor say aye.
Okay, before everybody faces up, I did have to bring that CD copy, went to finish the look of the American Bridge money that you approved, the road department used to, uh, make the bridge more attractive, but not an attractive nuisance like was described by the park service, which is an actual phrase they use. But if you look at the picture, it's been very, very well done job, and I met with, uh, it means, I thought, Nikki Nicholas and the park service on Saturday evening, and she is extremely happy, so, uh, thank you so much, she's a good candidate, I think. It definitely looks good, so, uh, that's all I have.
Okay, anything to do with Commissioner Day, you doing better, Commissioner Day, is he good?
Uh, I went to the fundraiser on Saturday and talked to one of his close friends, I met with him, he's doing better. Commissioner Day called about five fifteen this afternoon during the park celebration meeting, but, uh, he said he's getting better, but it's just gonna take some time, just apparently the high situations are a problem. And I understand from his close friend that he has the flu now on top of all this, so it's just, uh, gonna be a long process, but he will be back, he promised.
Also want to make a reminder that Thursday, November eighth at six o'clock, we have in a, uh, benefit auction at the Old Robin School. Uh, I'll proceed, we'll wind up going to, uh, renovations to the Elgin Community Center that we're currently doing. Some great things have been done already, uh, got some new windows, uh, new toilets, wind up painting the bathrooms, new, uh, windows, got new lighting, and we got the kitchen kind of up and going a little bit better, and so, mainly, we also looked at, you know, create a back porch, repainting the building, and have a better handicap access, so you get a chance, food to be served and sold there, and it'll be November eighth at six p.m., you get a chance to come on down, we're going to be with you.
There is one thing that Sheila mentioned earlier about the fallen, so, fallen officer monument, that dedication will take place on November twenty-eighth, I believe, at two o'clock, that they said? November twenty-eighth, two o'clock, it'll be in school, high schools.
On soccer field?
Yes, kind of thing around her, on soccer field. That's all, I don't have anything else, unless someone else has something.